Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee to order. It's Tuesday, June 8, 2021, and it's about 6:02 in the evening. Can I have the clock call the roll, please?
Certainly. Paula Johnson?
Present.
Dottie Oden?
Here.
Jessica Brown is present. We also have an attendance, Dan Donovan, Sean Smith, and Greg Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. And tonight, the first item on the agenda is the IT-FY-22 purchases. Mr. Rodriguez, can you give us an update?
Sure. We'll start with the Franklin Street networking project. So as I outlined in the memo, we have, it's called preferred pricing. So if you see one bid on there, it's the reason why. It's because the vendor we usually, we have asked for bids and worked with in the past, they give us the best possible price with Cisco by a significant amount. So we get the best possible price for the switches, the phone gateways, the access points. So after reaching out to a few companies, they said that they can't beat the price that was already in the system, that was already given. So it's under the recommendation of the Department of IT to award the contract for, to pretty much stand up Franklin Street's networking to RTM in the amount of $63,309.92. All right.
Is there any questions? Okay, if there's no questions, I'll make a motion to award the bid to RTM in the amount of $63,309.92. Do you feel that this will be going any higher, or is this is the price?
This is the price.
Okay, so I'm going to put in there not to exceed $63,309.92. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And Ms. Brown, do you want to call the roll?
Certainly. Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Could I just get a clarification? Did you say $73,000?
$63,000.
$63,000, okay.
$63,309.92, not to exceed.
Okay, thank you, yes.
And Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to Nashville School District disaster recovery. I will like to point out first, Mr. Donovan caught a typo this afternoon. In the second sentence, or first sentence, second line, it says Franklin Street location. That's meant to say North High School. So when this, it will be corrected and submitted for full board review for the board meeting, I believe, the 22nd, right, Mr. Donovan?
Correct.
All right, thank you. So again, this comes into a preferred pricing situation again with New Era Technology, formerly Access Technology, to support a disaster recovery fail-safe at North High School, so in this building. So we should replicate our data and do what is called a cool site, which means it would take after a little bit of configuration, but it would be a very minimal downtime if the district were to go down from South and data. So emergency services would still be up for the district. So this is the redundant site that would be here at North High School. So this is in, for two different amounts, because there was two different work orders. It was 200, one is for $265,926.66, and that is for the storage and licensing. And then another quote for New Era Technology for $46,258.70, and that's for the networking cards to be put on our core switch.
Does anybody have any questions on this?
I do not think so, no.
Okay, can you go into a little bit, so this is the backup, basically?
Yes.
Backup system in case they go down between the high schools, is that it?
Correct. So all, most of our data right now, it goes through South. We have a backup system in North that we're looking to replace and to beef it up a little bit. So this, this new site would include a HP Enterprise Nimble Veeam for our backup. Right now, we have Unitrend, so we're going to be replacing it with Veeam, which works with our VMware environment and Synology. So it's, it's an improved system for the district. So like I said, it's a cool site. So if we were to go down at South, we would still be able to run emergency operations and get data from our student information database, so like Aspen and other critical servers up and available to keep the district running. So it's part of business continuity and information security. So backup, backups, backups is the most important.
And they said paper was no good. And all, we've got all this technology, and you still have all these layers of paper and backups, which is even more a nightmare. Anybody other than myself that had a question, anybody else?
I don't.
Okay. So we're going to make sure that on this Nashville School District disaster recovery, that in the second line is going to state Nashville High School North, is that correct? Okay. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to accept the Nashville High School, the Nashville School District disaster recovery with the correction for, on the second line, Nashville High School North, for two work orders. The first one is for the New Era Technology for $265,926.66 for storage and licensing, and New Era Technology for $46,258.70, networking cards on core switch. And neither one of them to exceed those amount.
Second?
Thank you.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
And Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, and now another Franklin Street job. This is for the wiring and cabling. So Mr. Smith and I have been working together to try to solicit some vendors to wire the buildings for not only fiber, but internal fiber, but the CAT 5 and CAT 6 copper for phones, access points, computers, and printers. So trying to solicit some quotes, one from Longchamp's and the others from Telnet Technologies or TNT. It's the department's recommendation that we work with TNT or Telnet Technologies for the amount of $71,194 to get the Franklin Street location ready for this fall.
Anybody having questions, any comments?
Can I ask? Yes, thank you. Are they sure they can get it done by this fall?
Absolutely.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep, TNT has worked with us for about a year and a half now, and this is, they said they can get it done before that time over the summer, yep.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay. Ms. Brown, do you have any questions? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that the Nashville School District for the Franklin Street wiring and cabling give the contract to TNT for not to exceed $71,194.
Second? Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
And Jessica Brown votes yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to quotes for desktops. So we solicited four quotes from IT Insiders, Government Connection, Best Buy, and Wally Computers. It's under the department's recommendation that we wear the contract to IT Insiders for not only their lowest possible price of $590 per unit, but it also is significantly less than any other vendor with the next one coming in around $24,000. So it's a recommendation that we purchase 100 computers from IT Insiders for fiscal year '21, '22.
And who are these computers for?
So we're, this is to complete the refresh from last year. So we have the remaining 10-year-old desktops that we wanted to recycle out. So this is for, to replace all the desktops at district office, some at Elm Street, and a few at Bicentennial, I believe. So those are the remaining older desktops within the district. And this will leave us with about 15 to 20 spares, just in case the older ones do break that are beyond repair or not cost-effective for repair.
Does anybody have any, Ms. Brown?
Do you still find value in replacing these with desktops as opposed to laptops?
Yes, we do. So just because we have the laptops for the teachers, we still need a classroom device to say for substitutes. If it, laptops with the teacher, then they don't have access to a computer in the classroom. Also, wired technology is also the most reliable out of any connection for Internet. So if a, if a device is wired in, it should work compared to wireless where it can bounce off and signals interfere. It's rarer now, but it's, the most reliable connection is still desktop.
I have one more question, kind of following up to that. And how many teachers or classrooms do you have that have both a traveling laptop and a desktop in the room?
All teachers in the district should have, should have both in the room, yep. So we bought the laptops with the one-time funds back in December, so.
So here's my question. So I guess if, do the teachers own these laptops for the year, is that what it is?
For the school year, yes.
For the school year. So if they're out, their laptop goes home with them?
Yes.
Why?
They can work from home if they'd like to, not work from home, but they can do work while they're at home. They can use it for productivity reasons, if they want to grade an assignment, do a Google Classroom, access Aspen, you know, all of the above. They have the ability to do that with their laptop. We gave them that ability with how we configured the device.
So can they use it for any personal use?
It's not encouraged, but they can. We have, we do have it filtered with our, with our content filter. So they are monitored, and we have policies that they can only do so much. They can't install, you know, off-the-cuff software on their computers, it's just not set up that way. So IT would have to install it ourselves or give them explicit permission to do so.
So they can take them home rather than leaving them in the classroom, so if they have a sub? And this is just about anybody, I guess, you know, in any workplace. I think I have kind of a problem with that, that people are taking their laptops home. A school property should remain in school. We're duplicating a desktop and a laptop in the classroom because somebody can take their laptop home, and that's another cost factor. It's a duplication, because you have to have one in the classroom in case you have a sub, that's what you said.
Well, that's not the only reason. The desktops also have optical drives, so it can play CDs or DVDs, whereas the laptops don't have those anymore. So a lot of teachers rely on, you know, CDs or DVDs to, you know, do lessons in their class as opposed to just doing YouTube. The wall plates in the classrooms are not all updated with HDMI, they're VGA for projectors in the classroom. So there are more reasons than duplicating computers in the classroom. But like I said, for reliability reasons, if a laptop doesn't work, they have their, they have their desktop. Also, the laptops we have are assigned to a specific person. So if somebody is assigned to a laptop, they can only use that device. That's how we set it up in the, in the system. So we can also remote encrypt them because of that. So we assign them and users in our backend system, and then for the desktops, anybody who has a district account can sign into the desktop. So it's not a one-to-one thing, it's a one-to-many for the desktops.
Thank you. Any other questions, any concerns? Ms. Donovan?
Yeah, I think the only other point, I understand your concerns with having two devices per classroom, so to speak, but the laptops came as a result of the one-time funds as of, because of remote learning and the pandemic. Had that not occurred, we wouldn't have purchased all these laptops. So it was really the COVID-19 pandemic and the funding that came with it that drove us to buy the laptops to give us this extra capability. We certainly will have to think about this as we move forward. Are we going to continue to do that as these get older, six, seven years from now? You know, it's, it's kind of an expensive way to do things. I mean, most companies, private sector, if they give their employees laptops, they can bring them home, they can do whatever with them, but they don't give them two devices, they give them one device.
We are asking the teachers that they bring their laptops back to the schools for the summer. Only those who are working in a summer program are allowed to use their laptops, because we're going to go through the laptops over the summer, make sure they're up to, you know, up to date with their operating systems and patches and all that stuff. So we, so it also extends the life of the laptop as well. So we've, we've worked with, along with the senior leadership, with the principals in the schools, to have them bring back their laptops so we can look at them.
And do we have spare laptops in case something happens to these?
We have the quotes for the 20 laptops that I'm, that's.
That's, that's going to be the spare ones?
Correct.
In case something happens to any of them in the district?
Yeah, yeah, those are going to be the spares for the coming year.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I have one more follow-up to that? What do you see in the horizon, if you could project out several years from now when these desktops are at the end of their life? Do you think that it would be advantageous to, because I think we probably are in a world now where teachers are going to be transporting their devices back and forth permanently, and I don't have a problem with that, but would be in a place where it would be better to have an external plug-in in the classroom for a hard, a hard seat, a disk drive of some sort, as opposed to an actual desktop setup? Just from your long-term plan, what's your projection for that?
If I, if I had a projection, I'd probably be rich, but my, my feeling is, so we've had these desktops in the classroom still working well after nine to 10 years, whereas the life of a laptop, you get four to five out of it, you're, you're pretty lucky. So for durability, because they're not carried, they're not moved, so that does extend the life of a, of a, you know, of a computer. Let's say a monitor gets broken on a desktop, you just swap out the monitor. Whereas the monitor gets broken on a laptop, can't really use the laptop. So, you know, eventually, I think we're going to get to that point where we're not going to use desktops, but I think for the time being, as, as we're going to go through another refresh, this is just to complete the refresh from last year, we can take a look at that in about four or five years from now.
Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion for the FY-21-22 desktops. The IT insiders not to exceed the amount of $59,900.
Second?
Thank you.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes.
Okay, the next item, is it the 21-22 Chromebooks?
Sure, okay. I was going to go to the laptops, but we can.
Oh, okay, you could do.
Yeah, just because we're just going off the conversation. Same recommendation to go with IT insiders, to purchase 20 HP ProBook 450GA computers in the amount of $12,898. Again, significantly less than any other bid company from GovConnection, Best Buy, and Wally Computers. So it's just the recommendation of the IT department for, to purchase laptops from IT insiders.
Any questions? If none, I'll make a motion for the FY-21-22 laptops that we give, give the bid to IT insiders for $12,890.20, not to exceed.
Second?
Thank you.
Paula?
Yes.
And Dottie Oden?
Yes.
And Jessica Brown votes yes.
Okay, so now we're on the Chromebooks, right?
Now on the Chromebooks.
My favorite subject.
Your favorite subject.
I know.
So the, again, the IT department solicited bids for four different VARs, IT insiders in the amount, it varied as the, as the price fluctuated, but the rough, the rough bid was And I did it, I asked for a tiered structure, you know, just depending on need, because we're not, we're not going to know where we are come the spring, I mean, come the end of the school year. So I asked for 700, 800, 900, 1,000 devices. Some provided that information, some didn't. But again, the lowest price came in with IT insiders at a rough price of $224.00 compared to GovConnection, which did include the price of the devices, but not the price of the licenses. Best Buy gave a price of per unit of $366.75. Wally Computer was $224.81, and Trox is $227.89 with a license cost of $29.89.
Thank you. Did we ever get our order in from last year, those, what was it, 700 Chromebooks or?
Yep, yeah, so the one that, one that we ordered from GovConnection for $3,200, that's, that's still coming in, because we ordered White Glove service, so those are still coming in right now and being distributed as they come. And the $3,500, I believe they're, they're still trickling in as well. Not trickle, I would say most of them are in at the moment.
Okay, so who are we distributing them to right now? School's almost over with.
Right, so some of the schools still need them at this time, so we're bringing them back into the schools and putting them in carts, so.
What do we have, one week left of school now, I think? Next week is the last day, the 15th or something?
Yes, Tuesday's the last day.
Tuesday.
The 15th.
Tuesday, so we have one more week of school, and we're still distributing Chromebooks. But they, are they staying in the school, or they going?
Absolutely, oh no, they're not going, they're not going to students' hands, they're bringing them home, they're just staying within the school.
Okay.
Yep.
So I'm going to turn to Mr. Donovan on this one. So since we don't have a number on what we're going to need on the Chromebooks for next year, we've got the tiers, 700, 800, 900, 1,000 devices, we don't know. So how are we going to do a motion on this?
Well, what I would suggest is the motion is that we can accept the price from IT insiders of $224, and then we can buy them as needed. We do this a lot at this time of year, so every single time someone needs to go out and, let's say, buy five Chromebooks, they can go here, because this is the low bid for the year. So it's sort of a, that's, what we're doing here is saying, okay, let's bid it, this is where we'll buy these this year, assuming they have them. You know, if someone calls up and says, I can get you the same, same one for 190, we'll buy it there, but our standard purchase for this year will be to buy it from IT Insider at this price.
So we, are you going to keep us informed on how much we're, we purchased with this? Because I hate to leave it open-ended like this, because that's what it really is, it's open-ended. That, we're saying that we're giving you permission to go out and spend $224 for Chromebooks, but we don't know if we're going to be getting anywhere from 700 to 1,000 of them, and so we're approving something that we don't have an actual amount.
Well, but these are all items that, if we were to purchase, would be in the operating I think it's too, it's way too early for us, as Mr. Rodriguez said, to tell if, how many we're going to need. We have the, the summer to get through to figure out what's there, there's still CARES Act money. But I think the approval tonight, simply assuming we need Chromebooks in the fiscal, in the 21-22 school year, we would approve the purchase of those Chromebooks from IT insiders. I think that's the motion. If we do buy a significant amount of Chromebooks, let's say 700 or 800, that would go to the monthly operating budget, I mean, to the monthly Finance and Operations meeting.
Okay, but we're, maybe I'm missing something here, I don't know, maybe?
We're approving a bid, basically.
We're approving a bid for $224 per Chromebook.
Yes. So that's, that's all you have to approve now, and we're not actually making any purchases right now.
Okay, so that's what I want to know. So when the purchases come, whether it's 10, or 100, or 200, you're going to be coming back to ask us to approve those purchases?
If there's a significant purchase, if there's five or 10, probably not, because that's below the $10,000. But if there's a purchase of hundreds of them, you'll see that in an operation, Finance and Ops meeting during the school year.
Members of the committee, are you happy with that explanation? I'm asking because you've got to vote on this.
Well, I am. I, I trust that they will just get what they, what they need. I don't think anybody's looking to have two or three of these for a child or anything. And, you know, well, with technology the way it is, these kids are going to be using this, I'm guessing, a lot more in the classrooms than we have in the past. I'm just happy that we're able to deal with somebody who's local. I think that's a real plus for this, so.
I also think it's important, it's, we also have, there's also a supply now, now, whereas before, you know, even six, seven, eight months ago, there was no supply. So now there's at least something out there. I mean, prices are a little higher than last year just because of supply and demand, but they are available. So that's good for us.
So the ties are opening up from China again? Oops, we're going.
Wherever they're, wherever they're being sourced, it's the, a lot of it's other processors that are, go inside of them, so.
Ms. Brown?
What do you think, would you feel more comfortable if we edited the motion to accept the price up to the first 800 devices, and then at that point, is that what, that's the one we're looking at, right? Or however, like a certain number, and then they can come back and ask us for more? Or just approve the, if we edit it to say we approve the vendor?
How about if we make the motion that for the FY-21-22 Chromebooks, if we approve the vendor, IT insiders, for $224 per Chromebook, that we'll accept the first 700 devices, so this way they don't have to come back to us that quickly. So if they, if you find out that you need 500, let's say.
Yep.
We don't hold you up to purchase them if they've got them. And anything over 700 devices, you need to come back to the Finance and Operations Committee.
That's fine.
Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Is that fair? Okay.
Yep.
I'll second.
Yes.
Dottie?
Yes.
And Jessica votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night. That wasn't too bad with the Chromebooks tonight.
No.
Wait till I ask you for the inventory list as it comes in and everything's in pieces again.
I look forward to it.
I'm sure you do. You know me since last year, huh?
You're my favorite.
Thank you. That makes me feel, that brightens up my day.
I think you can leave now.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is Mr. Smith. He's lived through me for how many years? I've known him since he's been in the district.
Yep, 24 years.
Yeah, consistent. Mr. Smith, plant operation contracts.
Thank you. So I will start with the Franklin Street contracts. I have three of them. So the first one, we sent an RFP out for what I title low-voltage type systems. Those are for the fire alarm system, public address, master clock, and the security wiring We received, well, we solicited five different vendors that we were aware of, plus a couple of individual contractors that only do subsets of those systems. And we got three bids back, plus one subset. The low bidder was Gate City. They were at $129,600. As you can see from my memo, there was a wide spread. We talked to all three, trying to discern why there was a difference, and didn't really come to a resolution. They just said their numbers were their numbers. I am frankly a little uneasy with. There's some things I know in the RFP that we did not include, such as hold open devices for doors and that sort of thing. So that's why the contingency. So my recommendation is to award a contract to Gate City Electric. They're out of Nashville, New Hampshire. The amount of $129,600 with additional $20,000 of owner's contingency for a total of $149,600. And that funding will come from the Franklin Street School Fund.
Ms. Brown? No? Ms. Oden?
No.
Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion to recommend to HIA fire alarm, public address, master clock, and security wiring contract for Franklin Street School to Gate City in the amount of $129,600. With this recommendation, we'll have, will be to the vendor of the choice in the agreed amount, not to exceed an amount of $20,000 of the owner's contingency for installation of fire, alarm, master clock, intercom, public address systems, and wiring at the Franklin Street School. Funding will come from the Franklin Street School Funds. That should cover everything, right?
Second.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Daddy Oden?
Yes.
Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, the second one I'll cover is the security system. So the last contract covered the actual wiring from device, all the devices back to the hub. This contract is to Allied, which is our preferred vendor, really a sole source contract that goes back to when we actually installed all the access control equipment, the early part of the last decade. So this is the card readers, interior, exterior cameras, motion sensors, door contacts, the audiovisual intercom that you're all familiar with at the front of all of our schools, panic switches, door releases, and other hardware software. That'll be monitored by both our security monitoring company and also by our Assistant Director for Safety and Security. And so I recommend we award a contract to Allied Universal for the installation of access control security equipment at Franklin Street School in the amount of $132,784.32 funding from the Franklin Street School account.
Now, I know Allied Universal is your preferred vendor, but under, aren't we supposed to put it out for three bids because it's over $10,000?
Well, for this, it's, this is the system. We're using their system, so we're adding on to their system. We did bid this out back years ago when we put the whole system in. This is the system that won that bid, so now we're adding on to it. So it's hard, you don't wanna take a different system and add on to an existing system. It's not gonna work right.
It's kind of like our HVAC control systems we have. We have Control Technologies for the most part. Once you install that, you're, I wouldn't say stuck with it, but that's, you're wise to continue with that system.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, now make a motion to recommend to award security installation at Franklin Street to Allied Universal in the amount of $132,784. Okay, let's start again. $132,784.32 not to exceed, funding from the Franklin Street School account.
Second.
Thank you.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Daddy Oden?
Yes.
Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, my third and last one for Franklin Street is for HVAC controls, which we just briefly mentioned. Control Technologies is our vendor. This would also be sole source. They provided a quote to connect the steam boilers, the air handler, new hot water boiler, primer heating, all the valves associated with that, and give us the graphical interface that will allow us to monitor all those systems from plant operations. Their quote was $83,500. So I recommend we approve a contract to Control Technologies for installation of HVAC controls at Franklin Street School at the amount of $85,500, funding from Franklin Street School account.
Is it 85 or 83?
85, 3.
No.
83, 5.
Let me dive the quote here. Let me just make sure. $83,500.
Okay, perfect. Any questions? No? Okay, I'm gonna make the recommendation to award HVAC controls installation contract at Franklin Street to Control Technology, Inc., CTI, not to exceed the amount of $83,500.
Second.
Thank you.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Daddy Oden?
Yes.
Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Okay, our next contract, sticking with the South High School, the gym floor this time, the wood gym floor in the main gym. Again, that's about 18 years old. The wood floor finish has built up over time. It's chipping and flaking. You can actually see chips missing in the floor. Also had a water leak in one corner near one of the exit doors, so we have some warping floorboards. And throughout the gym, there are some boards that have to be replaced. So we're looking to replace those floorboards and then just sand down the entire floor and refinish it. We received this time bids from four vendors. And the lowest was American Sports Floors. So I recommend the Board of Ed approve a contract to American Sports Floors for the repair, sanding, and refinishing of the wood gym floor at the South High School in the amount of $36,388, plus a $4,000 contingency for board replacement for a total of $40,388. Funding line is, I won't read all those numbers, but it's the Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Account.
Any questions? Okay, then I'll make a motion to recommend to refinish the South High School gym floor to American Sports Floor in a amount not to exceed $36,388, with a contingency of $4,000 for board replacement for a total of $40,388, funding from Buildings and Grounds Maintenance.
Second.
Thank you.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Daddy Oden?
Yes.
And Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, our next one is, we'll shift to the North High School now. So we have a dumpster that doubles as a compactor out behind the loading dock and the kitchen. This is original to the school, so that goes back to 2002. We've replaced various components on this thing a number of times, but it's no longer possible to do that. We've worked with the solid waste department. This is their bailiwick. So they actually went out and solicited quotes from vendors. They only got two. And the lowest of the two was from a company called Waste Equip for $22,467. So I'm recommending the Board of Ed approve the purchase of a compactor dumpster for the North High School from Waste Equip in the amount of $22,467. Funding line is the Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Account.
Any questions? Okay, then I'm gonna make a motion to recommend to replace the North High School roll-off dumpster to Waste Equip, not to exceed the amount of $22,467, funding from Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Account.
Second.
Thank you.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Daddy Oden?
Yes.
And Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, our next one is, we'll shift to the North High School now. So we have a dumpster that doubles as a compactor out behind the loading dock and the kitchen. This is original to the school, so that goes back to 2002. We've replaced various components on this thing a number of times, but it's no longer possible to do that. We've worked with the solid waste department. This is their bailiwick. So they actually went out and solicited quotes from vendors. They only got two. And the lowest of the two was from a company called Waste Equip for $22,467. So I'm recommending the Board of Ed approve the purchase of a compactor dumpster for the North High School from Waste Equip in the amount of $22,467. Funding line is the Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Account.
Any questions? Okay, then I'm gonna make a motion to recommend to replace the North High School roll-off dumpster to Waste Equip, not to exceed the amount of $22,467, funding from Buildings and Grounds Maintenance.
Second.
Thank you.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Daddy Oden?
Yes.
And Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, our next one is, we'll shift to the North High School now. So we have a dumpster that doubles as a compactor out behind the loading dock and the kitchen. This is original to the school, so that goes back to 2002. We've replaced various components on this thing a number of times, but it's no longer possible to do that. We've worked with the solid waste department. This is their bailiwick. So they actually went out and solicited quotes from vendors. They only got two. And the lowest of the two was from a company called Waste Equip for $22,467. So I'm recommending the Board of Ed approve the purchase of a compactor dumpster for the North High School from Waste Equip in the amount of $22,467. Funding line is the Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Account.
Any questions? Okay, then I'm gonna make a motion to recommend to replace the North High School roll-off dumpster to Waste Equip, not to exceed the amount of $22,467, funding from Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Account.
Second.
Thank you.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Jessica Brown?
Daddy Oden? Yes.
Yes, and Jessica Brown votes yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next one is to replace the floor in the fitness room at the North High School, sometimes known as the weight room. So we had a flood a number of years ago, 10 years ago, in the fitness room. Water got between the top rubber layer and the subflooring, and just over time, that topware separated. And the staff took out the top layer and just get rid of it. So they've been living with just the subflooring ever since. So we're looking to replace that with a rolled rubber flooring that's been approved for this sort of use. Almost right on time. Wait till the train goes by. We solicited bids from four vendors, and two of them chose not to bid. The low bid came from New England Sports Floors, so I'm recommending the Board of Ed approve a contract with New England Sports Floors for installation of the new rolled rubber flooring at the North High School fitness room, the amount of $17,613, funding from Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Account.
Any questions? Ms. Brown?
Are the new flooring, is it rolled all the way across or is it replaceable tiles?
It's rolled. It's like a big long sheet, almost like a wrestling pad.
So it's got some kind of a safety?
Yes, yes.
My question is, how come when the floor got damaged 10 years ago, it wasn't replaced? Please don't tell me it was a funding issue.
I honestly don't have an answer to that. I just, I haven't really, I have a new supervisor overseeing the school, and she said we really need to do something about this. It never came to my attention, but I don't have a reason for you.
Because I wonder, I mean, I guess it wasn't hazardous, but it's the subfloor. So is that subfloor more wood? Or what kind of material is that subfloor?
Well, you would have, well, everything's concrete.
Concrete. So the subfloor is concrete?
Everything's, yes.
And we're putting more of a rolled padding down right now?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a padding that's approved for use in fitness rooms where we have weights and things like that.
I know.
So I equated it to like a wrestling pad, which is a big, long, rolled-out thing, but it's a little more dense than that.
But I guess what I'm saying here is that we have concrete, and now we're finally putting a pad down 10 years later, that it really makes me wonder. I mean, now it's $17,000. 10 years ago, it could be a third of the price, a quarter of the price, you know, 10 years, you know? But why, I know it's not a big deal, but I'm just kinda saying, you know, concrete versus a pad right now. I mean, we didn't take care of something with water damage. But there's no mold, no nothing there, right?
No.
Okay.
We had a valve that loose in a neighboring closet which caused the water damage. That's been fixed.
Okay. I'm gonna make a recommendation to replace the North High School fitness room floor to New England Sports Floors for $17,613, funding from Building and Grounds Maintenance.
Second.
Thank you.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Daddy Oden?
Yes.
Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes.
Okay, the last purchase I have for tonight is, just came to light in the last 48 hours. As you know, we have a four-year contract with Trane to do, what I term a midlife renovation of our four chillers. So we have a large and small chiller unit at each of the two high schools. So we have the small chiller at the South High School scheduled for work this summer. In fact, we're gonna start it the next week or so. But we've identified an issue with the small chiller here, which was worked on a couple of years ago, where the oil pump is, if not dead, dying quickly, and the motor, the bearings in the motor are starting to make a lot of noise, which is not a good sign. So we've discussed, well, we did, we had some conversations with them, and so, well, why wasn't this taken care of when we did the midlife renovation? And they basically said this wasn't part of the scope. We said, "Why didn't you replace the oil pump? It seemed kinda basic, the same thing, wasn't part of the scope." And so they gave us the cost to do the work. It's a lot of money, but they have to take the chiller unit completely apart. And then, of course, the chiller is full of liquids, and it's quite a task. They did say, when they get around to doing the south chiller, they're gonna give us a new oil pump. They'll throw that in this time, but doesn't make it any better that we have to do it. But if we didn't do this, then I'm sure sometime during the summer, we'd lose the entire chiller. So this is one of those catch it while we can. Told Mr. Donovan, I didn't even tell him about that till this afternoon, which is, we got the quote this afternoon. And I'm getting pretty tapped in my budget, so Mr. Donovan assured me we'd find money someplace. So I recommend awarding the work to Trane in the amount of $19,630.
Any questions? So, when they came out to do work, what was it like? Did they work on this cooler before?
So it's a chiller. So imagine, did you go to Franklin Street? Did you come that, go down to the basement of the boiler room? There's this big, long, black thing, just sitting idle. That one's pretty old, but that's what a chiller unit looks like. So we have two of those in each of the two schools. And they, when they do their, when they renovate it, they pretty much take it apart and replace belts, look at gears, look at everything. And they did that, but they did not see anything wrong with the bearings or the pump at that point.
And when was that done? How long ago?
Two years ago.
Two years ago? Okay, okay. And we're just going to leave this open in the motion that you're gonna find the money?
Yes, we can, we'll charge it to the Building Maintenance Account. I'll just need to transfer some money out of a count that has excess, but it'll get charged to that account.
Okay.
You'll see the transfer next month for this.
Good thing you're good at what you do.
Especially with a guy like Mr. Smith.
I know. Okay. Any questions?
No. When they do the, actually, I do have a question. When they do the south one, when that comes, do, they're gonna do the pump, will they do the bearings also? Is that not something you traditionally look at?
I doubt it, but I can assure you, we're gonna make sure they do.
All right, thank you.
When they do the South one, when that comes, do, they're going to do the pump, will they do the bearings also? Is that not something you don't traditionally look at?
I doubt it, but I can assure you, we're going to make sure they do.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to repair the North High School chiller in the amount of $19,630, and the and Trane will be doing the repair. And it's going to be charged to the Building Maintenance Account. That's the kind of screwed-up motion that I made, but you'll get to drift with.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Okay, last thing I have is informational. I can't even remember if we brought this up previously. I don't think we did. But we had a leak in the North, this school's gym lobby this past winter. This was just before Christmas. Involved, actually, maintenance of sprinkler heads. And inadvertently, the sprinkler head was damaged, and flood ensued. Fire Department arrived very quickly, helped to minimize the damage, but a lot of the water did get into the gym right next to it. So we notified Risk Management right away, and over time, of course, when water hits wood, you don't see damage right away. It takes time. Over time, we've noticed that the wood floorboards have warped. We went back to Risk Management to see if they would take care of the replacement of the warp sections, and they've agreed to do that. So they're going to replace those planks, and then, because you're going to have very dissimilar wood-looking wood at that point, they're going to sand the entire floor down, put new game lines and new floor finish. Kind of what we're doing at the South High School as well. So Risk Management's going to pay for this. We don't have to do anything except enjoy the work. We have a relatively, almost new floor. The second thing I want to talk about is, you probably recall, I want to say, three years ago, we had to test all the drinking water locations across all our schools. And that's every five-year occasion, so we're going to have that coming up again in a couple of years. But because we have a brand-new school at Franklin Street, we took samples. We worked with the Public Health Department again, and we came up with one out of 10 that was slightly above. So the threshold is 0.015 milligrams per liter of lead. The one that was slightly above was 0.021, which is not very much, but still, it's above the threshold. So we're going to replace the plumbing. It was a ladies' bathroom up on the third floor. We'll replace the plumbing, retest it, and hopefully do better next time. It's, now, it's in an old building. It's been sitting dormant for a couple of years. It used to be Nashville Christian Academy. So that might be part of the issue. Once we get in there, run all the water through the pipes, it'll flush out the system and have better results. We are, none of the water tested was in a water fountain, because we're going to replace all the water fountains. These were all in bathrooms or sinks.
So we have money in the Franklin Street project to do all this? We have money put aside to, for the bathrooms, for the water, to replace?
Well, the, yeah, yes. So we put together a budget for Franklin Street, and I put some aside for reworking some of the bathrooms, and we put money aside for the water fountains as well.
Okay, so we've got money in the budget for that. Okay, perfect. Ms. Brown?
I had two questions. When you replace the water fountains, will you be putting in the ones with the unit, with the water bottle filler?
Yes.
Okay, and when you found out that you had higher lead levels, what do you replace? What type of plumbing do you replace it with to change that, or is it just, is it a different material?
Typically, we change out the entire sink assembly. We'll go back to the wall. Again, I suspect it's more because the city's been, the city, the school's been sitting dormant for three years.
Like sediment in the pipes?
We will retest it before we have anybody in there using the water.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And since we don't have to make any motions on this, this is good, just informational.
Right.
And that's the last thing on your agenda?
Yeah, I'll stick around for a while.
It's up to you, because I was going to say you're free to go. Perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Donovan, I guess we're with the sped contracts? Is that what we're starting off with?
Well, the school facility rental first.
Okay, skip the one.
Yep, that's fine.
Sorry about that.
Okay, as you're aware, last March or April, the Board voted to close use of our facilities to outside rentals, which made all the sense in the world based on the pandemic going on. Now that things have improved, vaccinations are on the rise. Many people are now reaching out, and they would like to start to rent our facilities again. We do have in our budget $100,000 that we're hoping to get in facility rentals for this coming school year. So we already have a policy in place. It's Policy KF, which manages this whole process. But I suggest, my suggestion is that we make a motion to return to BOE Policy KF regarding community use of school facilities starting September of 2021.
Do you have a copy of that? That's what I'm looking for, a copy of it. I don't have a copy. Is that enough for?
That didn't get into the package.
Oh, okay.
When I was reviewing today, I noticed it wasn't in.
Can you share with me, Dottie? Okay. Okay, so do we have, do we have the contract in here in the package, or no, just the policy?
Just the policy, because you voted to prevent people from using the facilities. We'd just like to go back to, you know, it, there's still a process. People have to pay down payments, or if we know them, we'll, but they can start booking things, because people like to start looking ahead. We're really not that far away from September when you're talking about planning a.
So essentially, this lifts the restrictions on booking?
Exactly.
I think that's great. Okay, do you want to say the motion again? It'll be easier for him than for me to.
To, the motion is to lift the restricting, the restriction on booking, no, let's say, lift the restriction on use of, community use of school facilities effective September 1st, 2021.
Is there a reason that you want to wait until September? Could there be reason that we could have it open before then?
I think with all the work that's going on, and the summer camps and everything, we've, we're going, we have already worked with the city on some of the summer camps, so we'll be using those and our summer programs, and Mr. Smith's need to clean the facilities, I don't think we'll be ready until September 1st.
Does anybody have a problem with that, September 1st?
I was going to say, if we lift it, and then you can use it at your discretion, if you still don't want to let people book the space. But that gives you more flexibility if something comes up this summer that the facilities can be used for something.
Yeah, that's fine, and then it gives it back to the administration, whereas we manage it, so that's fine.
So just lift it.
So do you want to amend the motion to say that we will open up the facilities if needed sooner, before September 1st?
When is our next meeting? June 28th?
I think it's the 23rd, I think.
23rd, so July 1st?
As of July 1st.
Would you be comfortable with that, ladies?
That's fine with me.
All right, so lift the restriction on community, lift the restriction on community use of school facilities and revert to Policy KF beginning on July 1st?
That's fine. I'll second.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Jessica Brown votes yes, and the motion passes.
Okay, Mr. Donovan, are we on the sped contracts now, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So there are two sped contracts in the package. The first one is with ABC Physical Therapy. They provide the PT or the physical therapy for the students in the district. They've been doing it for quite a long time. We had planned to go out to bid this past school year, but with the pandemic and students not in the school, et cetera, et cetera, we did not do that, though we have, we're definitely going to do it this fall for this contract and for the next contract that I'll speak to in a minute. But at this point, what, this firm has been with us for as long as I can remember, probably at least 15, 18 years. The total amount of the increase that they're looking for, dollar value, is a little less than 1% compared to what it was last year. So last year, it was $221,000. This year, they're asking for $223,000. The one thing that's a little bit troubling to me, though, in this contract is if you look at Addendum A and you see fees, on paragraph one, they talk about what the fee per hour is. Last year, it was $72,000. This year, it's $80,000. This coming year, it's $80,000. So that's an 11% increase. Personally, I think that's a bit much during a time like this. Based on the number of sessions that are going to be required, we still might end up with the total dollar value. But part of me would like to reach back to this vendor and try to ask why the increase is so significant. I mean, 11% increase in a time like this for services seems very high to me. So can either approve it, or you can suggest that I go back and speak with them. I just actually viewed this contract yesterday. These were put into the, because we did have a little issue with the package this month, as you know, due to people not being, being around.
So were you recommending to us that we should just send it back to you and let you go in and renegotiate it?
Yes, I would like to do that.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, and the second, the second one is a contract with Clark Associates. They provide the OT services, the occupational services. Their increase is 2%, which is much more in line with what it has been. This is a group that once again has been working with the district and our specific children for a long, long time. We are going to go and bid it out to see what there will be, see if there's, what the prices will be from other vendors. But I think for this year, since we need these people come the summer, for the ESY Summer School, I would suggest we approve the contract with Clark Associates for not to exceed $876,819.
Is there any questions? Okay, might as well take what Mr. Donovan said on the motion. Simple and easy. Okay?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Dottie Oden?
Yes.
Jessica Brown votes yes, and motion passes.
Thank you. Now, we'll see FY '21 forecast that you handed to us tonight.
Yes. So we'll give our eyes some good practice.
Yes.
And we'll make sure we keep using the right olive oil moving forward.
Exactly right.
Okay, so if you flip to the second page to start, you will notice that in the box down there, it says remaining $2.2,613,000. Last month, when I did this same calculation, my estimate was $2,742,000, so we're pretty much in the same ballpark. I updated my forecast. I spent more time with the labor dollars, which is obviously the biggest piece of the budget. And I'm pretty comfortable with sort of where this forecast is. It is a, obviously, something that is not common in the school district to have this sort of amount, but due to the world of COVID, certain things weren't done, certain costs weren't incurred. So we do have extra money in the operating budget that we did not spend. So if we flip back to the first page, we'll just, I'll run through quickly the areas. So the salaries and wages line items, if you look, the third column from the right is a column that says remaining. So if you look at the total for that, that section of accounts, the 5,100 counts, you'll see that there's, there's going to be an extra, almost $1.5 million in wages. And that's either overtime that wasn't required. It is subs that weren't required because we weren't in school. It is staff that did not work. We had probably over 40 paras that when people left due to the pandemic, and we did not go out and hire them, it would have been hard to find them anyway, I think, but, and just some other positions where people left and we didn't fill them. We just sort of managed with what we have. So the total savings in that is, like I said, almost $1.5 million. So that's the biggest piece of what the overage is in the budget. If you look on the, you'll notice in the summer column, you'll see $8 million and 1.70. Those are sort of the summer costs that will be paid to the, to the teachers throughout the summer. But that, that's part of this budget. So the next set of accounts, you'll see the 52 accounts, fringe benefits, most of those, all those, whether they're in excess or whether they're an overrun, they revert back to the city anyway, because they add them to our budget. So we don't get any, any benefit of them, but we don't also get any penalty from them. The only one that we'll save there is the educational assistance. In the teacher's contract, there's $225,000 put aside for educational assistance. I'm projecting there'll be about $84,000 to $85,000 of that not used this year. Lately, that has been something that the union has not used the whole amount. Not sure why, but a lot of teachers, either teachers are coming in with their masters already, or they're just sticking with the bachelor's and not getting the masters. I'm not 100% sure of that, but we haven't spent this full amount in the last three or four years.
So why do we keep putting it in the budget, then?
Because it's in the contract.
Because it's in the contract.
And so therefore, they have the right to spend that much. They just haven't spent it. And the contract actually changed, too. They used to spend, they could spend an unlimited amount per person. Then there was, in the last contract, they went in and said, you can't spend more than $3,000 per person. So basically, they sort of just pushed, pushed the number down. It's part, it'll be discussed in the teacher negotiations going on now, but.
Because I remember when I was on the board, the last time, I would question all these conferences and seminars. And because some people would go, some people, I mean outrageous amounts, travel, the hotels, the meals, the plane. And I asked one of the assistant superintendents, that's when we was back in the boardroom at the central office, and I asked him a question. I was sitting here, the wall was there, and I said to him, I'd like to get all the information. I'd like to know, really, who's, how are we using this? Teachers are going away. Are they coming back? Are they sharing it? And I had this assistant superintendent sit there like this, and when I said I want to report on it, he took the pencil and leaned that against the wall. I mean, it was just like, it was an amazing thing, because the money that was being spent back in 2000, 2001 was crazy on these conferences. And if we weren't coming back and sharing it, with the plane fare, the meals, the hotels, I mean, it was really a lot of money.
Yeah.
So I'm glad that we're not using quite as much, but I just.
Well, this, that, that's a different line item, actually. This is just for, this is just for courses taken towards a degree. So these are college courses that they take. So.
We shouldn't be paying for it.
Okay, the next set of accounts, professional technical services, you'll notice that's a, actually, a negative number. actually a negative number. And obviously, the line that overran by far the most is legal services, which I think everyone sitting in this horseshoe right now is aware of. So that's a negative. That was probably one of the few lines that really ran over budget this year. The next set of accounts, property services, you can see there'll be an excess there of about $375,000. Almost all of that is coming from the electric, the heating, gas, and the water, the utility accounts. We weren't in the buildings, so we didn't use as much of those services. So that's not too surprising, really. Other services, that group as a whole is about $735,000 over budget, and almost all of that is basically the transportation, the bus transportation. We didn't use the buses much, we paid a lower fee. So the net of the regular transportation, sped transportation, and the negative number in out-of-district, which we're always out-of-district, the net of that is 713 excess. So that's 713 of all the other accounts of 734. So like I said, the transportation was another area that we didn't spend to the budget, not only for the contract with first student, but also all the out-of-district transportation because a lot of those students weren't traveling like they would to their out-of-district during at least the first half of the year.
So let me ask you a question. So we have a negative amount on the out-of-district?
Yes.
The tuition out-of-district of $822,969?
Right.
And that's because of why, again?
We, we, we've always budgeted, we've never been able to catch up. About four years ago, we had this increase of about $1.5 million in out-of-district. The out-of-district costs for some of these schools are still going way up. What we had this year was, we had the smallest number of students in out-of-district placements than we've had in probably seven or eight years. Now, the interesting thing will be what will happen next year. You know, the pandemic threw a lot of curveballs at us in a lot of ways, so it'll be interesting to see what happens. Did some students that typically move into Nashua and end up going to an out-of-district placement, or one that are already, did they not move to Nashua for some reason? But we didn't, we didn't get an influx this year of students for out-of-district, which, from a cost point of view, that's good. So, but the budget number should probably be about 6.5 million. Saying that, we have a special revenue fund that I budget usually $400,000 to $500,000. So if this budget were perfect and we spent every single dollar, we would, I wouldn't have other accounts to make up for the difference here, but I have that special revenue fund. So I do have, that's sort of my backup in case all the other accounts don't have any extra money.
Okay, so at the end of the year, we're not doing any carryover from this every year, are we?
No, we...
We just pay it and it comes back down to zero, this account?
Yeah, we'll start fresh next year, yes.
That's what I was questioning, because the way you were saying, I thought that there was a carryover.
No.
Actually, I want to follow up. Is there, do we carry over anything from the special revenue fund if there's anything left?
Special revenue funds do carry over. So that's the reason that when you have extra here, use it here, and then you get to keep the special revenue fund. That does carry over.
So at the end of this month, if, let's say, we still have the 2.7 million or 2.5 million, that's going back to the city, right?
Yes, I got a few things to talk about in a minute, but...
Okay, I'm jumping ahead.
Yes, that's okay. All right, so the next set of accounts, which is mostly on the second page, the supplies and materials account. I'm estimating, I know that testing supplies, we're going to have about $40,000 extra there because we didn't do a certain amount of testing. So I'm just estimating that at about 140. That's probably the least accurate, that's truly a guess, though most of the ordering is all complete now, so there's going to be a number, might it be 110 instead of 140 or whatever it might be, but it's not going to make a big difference in the scheme of things. The other expense line, or it's indirect costs, that is the revenue we get from managing the grants. So when, if we have a $100,000 grant, we can take 2.5% of that and bring it back as a credit to our operating budget. So we budgeted 210,000, we've already been able to book 320,000. The reason for that is the grant spending is higher this year. A, we have CARES Act money. B, we had Title I and IDEA were higher than usual. So the federal grants were at a very high level compared to a typical year. So we're getting that 2.5% more. So a good thing for our operating budget. There a question there?
No. I'm just thinking.
Okay, the equipment, I'm estimating about $16,000 or $17,000 extra. It's going to be mostly in furniture. Most of that is computer, and after what you heard tonight from Mr. Rodriguez, those amounts will all be spent. The next two lines are fine. Then you'll notice there's a negative number here in the 253. What we have in this budget is typically two sources of revenue. We have the facility rentals, and then we have the sports fees, okay? Those we budgeted at 355,000. We're going to get a whole lot less than that. We're not going to get anything for facility rentals because we shut that down for the whole year. And the sports fees, I think we, the board voted not to collect them for one quarter, and so we're going to get about $100,000. Typically, we get about 180 or 175, but, so that's going to sort of reduce the operating budget. But like I said, we still sort of have this $2.6 million number. Now, I do have a few suggestions, not that we have to necessarily vote on them tonight, but I'd just like some ideas on how to use this. Personally, sending some of this back to the city to help with the tax rate, I'm fine with. I have spoken to the people at the city about this, but there's probably a few things that we might want to consider using some of this money for. One of them is, we have one more, if you recall, last year, we had about $600,000 extra, and we used just about all of it to pay off the Smart Start, which I think was a benefit. Not only did we, we weren't in the buildings for electricity, but now we've paid off the Smart Start, which is basically where the utility comes in, replaces the existing lights and puts in, excuse me, LEDs. So then the LEDs, A, last longer, and B, have a lot of energy savings. So we have one school with the Smart Start left. It's main dumpster, it's $165,000. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and do that, that will be beneficial for next year. It's good for, it's good for a lot of different reasons, right? Saving money and saving energy. So that's $165,000. Another thing is, Mr. Smith tonight talked about the high school floor at North that had a flood, and he reached out to risk management, and risk management said they would cover it, which is the typical way of doing things. But if you think about it, we're self-insured. So the floor, risk management will pay for it, but it's really Nashua tax dollars that are paying for it. Since we have some extra money here, maybe we can just pay for it, and they can keep that in the risk management fund. So I think that's something that sort of keeps everyone happy. So that's about $70,000. It's 69 something, but we just rounded off to 70. The Franklin Street, Mr. Smith gave you a number of upgrades today, a number of contracts, and then there's a number of upgrades. The amount, we have about $500,000 to, that was our estimate of the funding that we had to upgrade Franklin Street, but as it turns out, things are a little more expensive now, a bunch more expensive, especially when it comes to some of these, yes, but the fire systems and a lot of those things are more expensive. We need to put those in, we've approved them tonight. So I'm thinking that if we could take $500,000 of this, put it into the deferred maintenance account, so Sean can continue to put everything we need into Franklin Street, we might as well just do as much of that as we can instead of spreading it over two years. So I put $500,000 in there. And then, this one's a little more personal to me. The carpet at central office is a disaster. If we could get, it's the original to the building, and that was built in when, 1980-something? Yes, it's his building.
Yeah, he was still alive then, wasn't he?
In that building? Was he still, was he alive when he was in that building?
Oh, yes, corner office.
So I'm thinking that, I asked Sean, he said he reached out to National Wall Paper just to get an estimate, 20 to 25,000. So I'm thinking that maybe we could encumber those funds and get that done.
Is that it? The list keeps getting bigger.
I'm just throwing out some...
I was so, at central office, if I can weigh in a little bit there, I've actually thought for years now, before, well before I was on the board, that it is not welcoming walking in there. It is dark and not friendly. I think that that could be a really good thing to lift up the district as a whole, just if I, I mean, I know we're not to the point for a discussion yet, but not just the carpet, those front desk areas and the chairs out there are pretty gross, too. So I think you could use some refreshing and maybe if it's a new paint, make it a little more cheerful. Sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine. Actually, we're working on painting. If you notice, we painted the outside during the fall, and we're sort of going office by office and painting the inside. We've done the superintendent's. It's when an office is open for a bit, then we go in and we paint it. So, and Tara and Stacey are picking out all the colors. I'm totally, I'm not allowed to get involved with that.
When you're doing this, I'm sorry, when you're thinking about this, that center room where we used to have our board meetings, there is a plastic curtain, and in the summertime, special ed does some testing in there, and you cannot hear yourself think with some of the noise going on, which is normal. They're young kids that are being tested oftentimes, and it would be nice to have more of a soundproof divider that you could close. I know when I first started teaching, we had an electronic divider between two classrooms. We could open it up and make it very large, but it was pretty soundproof. It was a lot thicker than a plastic curtain. If you could look at something like that, I think that would make that area more valuable to, I don't know if I would say valuable, but more appealing to having two different groups in those two meetings, those two rooms, when you close the divider.
No, that's a good idea, I agree with that, especially if you're interviewing or something like that, and you have someone from the outside in, and you've got all kinds of racket in the room next door to you. Okay, and then, the other item that I had, that this is just an idea, we, when we purchased Franklin Street, it was an installment sale, we made the first payment this year, which was about $700,000. Then the next two years is $250,000, which is going to be fine because we're going to, we have most of that saved from not paying for Brentwood or Title I anymore. But the final year of it, there's a $600,000 payment. The plan for that was to use excess funds in the middle school project. So the bond, the $120 million bond for the middle school project, I said, based on everything, I've talked, I talked with Sean, I talked to Alderman Dowd, and they said, yep, we should have plenty left over. That being said, things have changed so much, costs have really skyrocketed on materials. The number hasn't changed just yet, but the number, they haven't really bid out the new middle school yet. As you know, they're working on, you know, Fairgrounds is almost done, and then the next year or so, we'll be spending a lot of time on Pennechuck. So part of me was just thinking, maybe I, maybe we want to accelerate that year three payment, and maybe I talk to the church and maybe try to negotiate a little bit. But that was another idea. So if you put those together, that's about like 1.3 million or so. That's about half of the 2.6. So we sort of use 1.3, the other half goes back hopefully towards the tax rate. And, I don't know, to me, it seems kind of fair. We're not, we're not being greedy, but we're using the money for one-time things, we're using the money, in my opinion, in a smart way, because I think starting next year, we're going to be back to normal, and when this list comes out next year, there's certainly going to be no number like this. It might be minus 200 when we start, you know, I mean. So that's sort of the report. Any thoughts on some of these items?
I think they're all worthwhile. I appreciate the fact that rather than to use risk management, we're going to take that, I think that's being responsible to the city. Things are going to get tough. I think the Smart Start, we save money in the long run, and the years to come, I think money's going to get tighter. I worry what's going, what's going on in Concord, how much money we're going to get for our students. So I think, I think this is all very reasonable, and I thank you for it because I think it's being a thoughtful citizen, being responsible as a member of the community, and the school district certainly is a big part of the community. So I appreciate the thought involved in this, and I think in the long run, it probably will help out in some budgets, future budgets.
Yes.
What I'd like to do, I know before we put in the Franklin Street for the last payment of $600,000, I'd like to see you go back and see if you can renegotiate, if we pay it up quicker, what would they do? You know, before we add that into that, because we have, we can always make a motion if we want to add that in there, say we're going to put that in there, waiting for Mr. Donovan to advise us whether or not the church would, who we're buying this from? The church, yeah, the church will reduce our costs.
Well, I think he said he wants to negotiate, didn't you?
Yeah, I'd certainly speak to them before I...
Right, but that, if we decide to do this and add that in there, we can leave that piece open, waiting for Mr. Donovan to get back to us in the negotiation. So what Ms. Brown was talking about, the entranceway to the school district, could we, I guess, have part of the maintenance go in and paint it and do anything with the front desk to dress it up and make it look a little bit more modern? And even just buy furniture's not going to be that expensive. What would you suggest? What do you think the cost would be?
I don't, I mean, I think the...
$3,000, less?
Well, I wouldn't think, well, if the carpets, let's say 20 to 25, just that was the ballpark for that.
Right.
I think furniture, you know, 3,000, 4,000 at the most, I think. You're right, some of that stuff is, like, I wouldn't sit in it.
Ancient.
And there's been a lot of, a lot of sick kids sitting on that over the years.
Well, wait a second, haven't we cleaned it from COVID, you know?
Well, we've sprayed it, but it's, you know, it's got a cloth material, so we could, we could probably do that. I have no idea what a curtain would cost, but I wouldn't think it would be that much. And then, you know, the thing you mentioned was lights. I mean, maybe we should look at a Smart Start kind of thing in our building because that hasn't been done yet. And the reason, that hasn't been done because it's a much smaller facility. They've gone after the ones that are, have a better return than our building, but that's something we could look at. I have...
I wonder if you could negotiate a deal if you did both buildings at once, or is it basically a set cost?
No, it's, the Smart Start?
Yeah.
That's, it depends on what they, they do a study and figure out what the savings would be. So that's, or we could, you know, the other option is like, if you can just change out the light yourself, you don't have to go through that. It typically makes sense to do it that way because you don't have to put any money up front. But if you happen to have the money up front, you can do that, too.
Good. Because we've got a maintenance department, right?
Yep.
They're handy. The guys are handy.
Yeah. I'm not sure if it takes a, an electrician to do that or what. We have two electricians.
I was just going to say that we do have electricians, too.
Yep.
And like even a front desk, how much you could just put something modern in there, you know, with the chrome and everything, so dresses it up and some new chairs. So why don't we wait for Mr. Donovan to get back to us on that? And we can make the motion right now for 760,000 for the Smart.
So Smart Start.
Smart Start for 165.
Franklin Street.
Franklin Street for, what was Franklin Street?
500.
That was 500,000. The north floors, the north gym floor, was it?
Yep.
For 70,000 and 25,000 for the carpet at Central Office. That totals 760,000.
I have a question. Do we need to pay for the, to the phone? We've had problems with the phone. We were supposed to save money with the new phones. It went up and somebody was supposed to come in to look to see if, I guess, some wires could be taken out or some phones disconnected. I'm not sure, but I know it was going to cost money.
But it, I, I did, we should have asked Mr. Rodriguez tonight because I've checked with him the last couple of months and he said the process is beginning. But I probably need a better update. But I think we can get this done for, it's not going to be much of a cost.
Really?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah. I don't, I think there are some people willing to do it. Well, what they'll do is they'll do an audit and they'll say, okay, you don't need these 20 lines. Let's say you're going to save 100. We'll take 20% of that savings for a year and then you get to keep it. So a lot of them will do things like that.
Okay.
But I did speak to him and I said, is that, is somebody finally, you know, moving on this? And he said they were, but I don't know. I'll have to, I'll get an update on that.
Oh, thanks. And I think on this, getting back to this, I think that we'll leave the carpet, that the administration, not the carpet, the administration building for the chairs, for the soundproof divider that you were talking about, that, the conference room soundproof divider on the chairs, the desk, the lighting. Maybe Mr. Donovan in our next meeting can come back with a kind of a figure or is this money going to have to be?
We may have to have a decision a little quicker, but maybe what I can do is at the, at the next board meeting, I can give you an update on some of those costs.
Would you expect it to be, I mean, is there really no idea what the curtain would, would it be like more than 10,000 if with furniture and curtain?
I wouldn't think a curtain would cost 10 grand. I, I don't know, though.
I mean, because I'm guessing there's some kind of structure to it, right? So it's soundproof.
I think it would be.
Yeah, I mean, the.
Make it soundproof.
Right. So I'm, I'm sorry, we're going to have to redo the math because I didn't, for this, and we're, we would be putting the six, the motion for the 600,000, that would be pending in negotiation?
Yes.
For the accelerated payment three. So do you want that to be in the same motion or in a separate motion?
Separate motion.
Separate. Okay. So right now, I was looking at the Smart Start at Main Dunstable, the gym floors at which, at North.
Franklin Street is, no, Franklin Street doing repairs, 500,000.
Yep. And that's at a deferred maintenance, all right, Franklin.
And 25,000 for carpeting for Central Office.
And if you want, you could put like, let's say, 15,000 towards other central office upgrades and then I'll have, I'll go get prices. I certainly, you know.
Okay. We could do that, the 15,000 and then hopefully you'll negotiate a good deal with the church that maybe.
Yeah.
I mean, if you can get your money early, why not take the money rather than waiting?
Yeah. I mean, I'd take it.
I'd take it. Okay, are we clear on all this now?
I believe so. Okay. So is that your motion?
That's a motion.
All right, from Paula Johnson. I will second. Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Tati Oden?
Yes.
Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes.
So hopefully we'll have about maybe 1.2 million going back to the city if I calculate it. And that's maybe a little bit less with the, if you say 15,000, so what, about 135,000, 1.3 million?
Yeah, but that'd be my estimate right now, yeah. And that number, as we get closer to the end of the year, will tighten up, you know? So in, in the July meeting, I can give you a pretty good estimate within a few thousand, 10,000 or so of what it'll be.
Okay, perfect.
I was just looking at the total. I have a total of 775,000. Is that correct?
I had a total of 760,000.
Yeah, but we added the 15, so.
Oh, okay. I didn't add the 15, 760. Yeah, 775. So, so you want to correct that?
Yes. To amend the motion for 775,000 total.
And that includes 15,000, an estimate of 15,000 for upgrades at Central Office.
Should we do, so we have, is this need to be spent before the fiscal year? So we might not have enough meetings before. So should we need a, a motion for the 600,000 for an accelerated payment pending the negotiation? Could you bring us that at the?
The full board?
Full board meeting?
Someone make my motions to accept all this?
Yeah, I'll, I can, I, I'll have the discussion before then and.
Okay.
I mean, I can kind of let you, this group, know beforehand what, what the result of the negotiations is and you can.
Then we have a special meeting? No, that will be at our next board meeting.
Or maybe, if it's, if it's, I, I think another way we could do it is maybe we could do it like 15 minutes before the board meeting, have a quick finance and ops.
Okay.
Do it that way and then we can roll into.
Before the HR meeting, this before the board meeting?
Are you still doing that?
Unfortunately, yes.
Before this meeting, before that meeting, by the time you're done, you're all meeting out.
That's okay. It's for a worthy cause.
Okay. So we amended the, the motion to look, vote on the, the correct figure?
Yes.
So it's all legit?
All right. So Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Tati Oden?
Yes.
And Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion amended to reflect 775,000.
Perfect. Now we've got the May financial report.
And since we went through the forecast, basically done that, so.
Now the transfer report.
Do you want to go through them all?
I, I did. I went, I read all, uncomfortable.
I've got questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's so many of them because it's this time of year.
Right.
Where people are moving all their funds around and making purchases. And there's even more this year than usual. For example, athletics, Lisa had a bunch of extra money because we didn't, didn't have all the sports all year. So she said, I, I need wrestling mats. I need, you know, some of these things that are really getting worn down. So I said, okay, it's in your budget. You can't spend your extra salary dollars, but you can spend your extra that you didn't spend on games and transportation and those things that you just didn't do. Upgrade some of that equipment that we never seemed to have the money for. So there's a bunch of that. And then a lot of, a lot of the rest of it is just the schools moving things around and, and making their purchases.
Well, that's part of my question. I'm seeing, you know, some of the school supplies. Is this for next year because we're at the end of the year? So what are they?
No, these are all ones that they made during, during the last month and a half. So all these amounts have been moved around.
They've already been moved?
They've been moved and the purchases have been made.
Okay. So I have some questions.
Sure.
On the miscellaneous equipment. Okay, you kind of went over some of it, but I calculated here and I did not add in, so she had 88,318 plus another 33,373.
Yeah, so there's, I think you're, you're talking about Lisa, the athletic director. For example, the 33,000 was excess transportation because they just didn't, they didn't either have the season or they, they had trips a lot closer to home than usual. So they, that's where they bought pole vault mats and safety systems for the two high schools.
Okay.
So those are like expensive things.
Because with that, it came to, before that 33,000 was 88,318.
Yeah, if you add up a lot of her items, yes.
And so purchase needed equipment, but you know, it's, when you see figures like this, you kind of want to know what are you purchasing because there's so much money, you know, being moved.
And it's, and what it was, was things like I mentioned. I, I could get a list from her if that would, and say what were the significant equipment items you purchased? Because I, what I suggested that she not go out and buy a whole bunch of softballs or baseballs or footballs, because that's, you, she buys those every year. They're built into our budget. But to buy some of these things like the, the mats that we just talked about that.
Right.
You know, are expensive and can't fit in a typical school budget. So I can get a list from Lisa, sort of what her, because her, I, I agree, her numbers were relatively high. There were a lot of, she had a lot of excess funds this year.
Yes, she did. And so I'd like to kind of get an idea because there's so much left over from her.
Okay.
That and Sunset Height, I think, was another big one with the equipments and things like that. So I'd like to make a motion. Are we, this is just for information, do you need a motion to accept the transfer report?
You have to accept it, yes.
Okay. What about the financial report? We didn't make a motion on that although we went on the.
We don't always make a motion on that.
I get confused. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to accept the FY '21 May transfer report.
Paula Johnson?
Yes.
Tati Oden?
Yes.
Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Donovan?
That's all I have for tonight.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
And I don't know if this is appropriate at this committee level, but when you go by Broad Street, there's an advertisement from Math Phasm or something and it's on school property. And I didn't think people could advertise on school property. Do you know anything about that?
No. Where it's, it's on the, is it in the parking lot or?
No, it's as you turn into the school, it's on the, the school property at, at the entrance of Broad Street School.
Like where the teachers go in or down at the parking lot?
At the, at the top.
At the top.
Yeah. I don't know if any other schools have it, but it's a business and I, I just didn't think people were supposed to advertise on school property.
Well, I know there, I mean, there's very strict rules about being on the buildings themselves, that they can't do that. I'll, I, I don't know. I can look into it.
Can you? Thank you.
Yeah.
I thought, I'm with you. I didn't think they're allowed to put anything on school property because a lot of times on Amherst Street, you'll see something will be there one day and the next day it's gone. So.
Okay. I'll find out.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Anything else for this evening?
I just want to thank Mr. Donovan for seeing that money that's very rare to have left over and to look for ways to possibly help us out and the city out. I, I really appreciate your suggestions. I thought they were, they were excellent.
Could you give the mayor some suggestions on how to save money here, too? Because he's spending it like crazy. I mean, as soon as it goes in his hand, it's in one hand, out the other, you know? Performing Arts Center, you know, and everything. And then I, I guess this is, I could say this, I don't care, but you know, when you stand there and you're all upset that the school might not have enough money this year, well, you know, it all depends on enrollment. You can't ask for more because kids aren't in the classroom if our enrollments go down. And I read an article that's saying more and more parents are putting their kids into private schools and religious schools and homeschooling and charter schools because of what happened last year. They're afraid. So question is, is that if you lose students, you're losing money, but you don't have the students there. So six in one, half a dozen on the other. Okay, can I entertain a motion? Motion to adjourn. I'll second it.
All right. And Paula?
Yes.
Tati?
Yes.
Jessica votes yes. We are adjourned at 7:48.